And all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the mayor of the city of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for the July 19, 2021 city council meeting may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the city council participating in the July 19, 2021 city council meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. With that, I'll ask Clerk Kammer to call the roll, please.
Beremis?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Gunn is absent. Hill?
Here.
Palmsky?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Toledo's absent. Cahill?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Eleven present, two absent, one vacancy.
Eleven present, two absent, one vacant. We have a quorum, and I will note that we, the two absent aldermen, will not be participating remotely tonight. Yes, we want to do that, too. The ayes, the aldermen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Get in the hangar. Thank you. Moving on. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three, announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Building and Committee meeting for July 26 is canceled next week due to a lack of quorum.
Any other announcements? All right. We're going to item four. We have a presentation on the Elmhurst metro station design alternative. All right. Welcome, and if you want to introduce yourselves and begin when you are ready.
Good evening. My name is Chris Martel. I'm a senior vice president with CDM Smith. We're an architecture engineering firm and serve the city of Elmhurst and many municipalities in the area. I want to talk to you tonight about your metro station and kind of the history of it. With me today is Sarah Sutherland. She's a senior architect in our Chicago office, and she's been working on this project along with myself for the last five years. So here's the topics we're going to talk about today. Tell you a little bit about the history of the project, some of the public outreach activities we've had over the years, and then talk about the alternatives and the recommendation. The goal of tonight would be to get the council approval of a preferred alternative, but we'll continue to talk about the background here. So the project status. As I mentioned, we've been working on this job for about four or five years now. Your station is an older station built in the late 1960s, last updated in the 80s. You can just kind of see the history here. It is a very busy facility for the metro system, the fourth busiest on the metro system. So there are some needs for ADA accessibility. The station itself is some dated, has dated infrastructure. There's some accessibility code issues, and also because of the successful growth that it's had over the years, it doesn't meet the current metro standards. The site, in addition, has some accessibility issues and safety and so forth with pedestrian vehicle conflicts and such. So the project is more than just the station, even though most of tonight is going to be focused on the station. The project involves the site around it as well, and we'll show some site photo or site concepts as well. So the last few years have been really focused on the phase one engineering and site analysis, so really looking at what the solution should be to solve the problems that exist with the current station and site. So that's what, on the engineering side of things and the IDOT side of things, which is the agency who oversees this work, that's called phase one engineering. So the, really looking at what the problem is and coming up with a solution. Phase two is what we were hired to do about a year or so ago, and that's really advancing the design and coming up with bid documents, and then phase three would be the actual construction. So again, phase one is pretty much complete here. We had multiple workshops, if you recall. We had a survey of metro riders. We went out and handed out cards and had a survey many years ago. We had a workshop with folks to ask them about what amenities and challenges, what amenities they wanted and what challenges they saw and wanted us to make sure that we got addressed, because again, no one knows the site better than the public and the residents. So had a workshop there, had an official public workshop a couple of years later where we had some concepts and solutions to present and talk through. And then again, in this beginning phase of phase two, we've had some additional public interface as well. That is outlined on this slide here. So we had a virtual public meeting, again, to really kick off a visual preference survey. Sarah will talk through the results of this, but it was a good way to reach the entire public and hear what they wanted for some preferences related to the architectural style. And then we met with the ABC committee and Public Works over the last few months and received their input and their recommendation for a preferred alternative. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Sarah, our lead architect, and she can talk you through some more questions.
All right. Thank you, Chris. So I'll give you a summary of kind of the site layout and building layout that was established during phase one, just to remind everybody of the overall scope of the project. So here on the screen, you'll see the proposed site plan, the eastern portion, which does include both inbound and the outbound station, which you can see in blue, north and south of the tracks there on First Street, west of York. And then the other two blue rectangles that you see to the east of York would be warming shelters. Also, within this site plan, as Chris mentioned, there's a number of accessibility improvements. So the ramps that you see just east of the station bring you down to a new accessible underpass, so increasing the pedestrian safety of the crossing there at York. In addition to those major improvements, to the west, as well as in the slide I just showed, there are parking improvements. So to increase the safety of First Street, removing some of the angled parking there, there's pillow parking, as well as a pace drop-off location, and also increased connectivity to bicycle and pedestrian networks. About over 100 new bicycle parking bike racks planned within this as well. West portion. And then this is the building layout as established within phase one. The majority of the space, of course, is waiting area. Also, new accessible restrooms you see in the yellow block, potential vending janitors. The stair access would be to a mechanical mezzanine. And then in orange, you see highlighted is a vendor space. At the eastern portion of the floor plan, where it's shaded light blue, is a 24-hour waiting area. So that would be extended hours waiting area for the duration of the metro service to allow people to have a spot to wait inside during off-hours as well. In addition, it's a little hard to see on this slide, but if you see the dash line around the building, that's the overhang of the building intended to provide some outdoor covered waiting area to wait for the train as well. And then in this image, we kind of cut out the tracks, so you'll see the north side being the main station, but then on the south side, also creating some indoor area to wait with seating as well. And that would be connected not only with the new accessible underpass, but you'll see dashed lines there connecting that existing stair, or connecting the existing tunnel to the new stair on the south side of the tracks as well, so providing that direct connection for commuters back and forth. So the existing station is about 2,000 square feet. The inbound, the proposed inbound station is about 3,000 square feet, so an increase in the waiting area and increase in the number of seats. And then in addition to that, the 24-hour waiting area, which is not there currently, as well as having some seats and heated waiting, indoor waiting area on the outbound side. In addition to that, two new warming shelters. There's currently, I believe, one small warming shelter. So with all of those spaces proposed on this plan, the total waiting area is more than doubled to accommodate the increase in ridership. As Chris mentioned, in 2018, when the ridership study was done, there was about 2,500 weekday boardings, and then the projected ridership, which is what Metro Basin's standards on, it was projected to grow to 3,200 by 2038. So the new proposed station would meet those ridership numbers. So beginning phase two, we held some public outreach to get input from the community as well as from the various agencies within Elmhurst to guide us on the development of the architectural design of this new station. In February, there was a visual preference survey. We kicked that off with a public meeting. We had about 40 people attend that virtual public meeting. Being pandemic times, that was all hosted virtually. Folks were invited to provide comments at that point, as well as have an opportunity to take the visual preference survey, which I'll show you detailed results from. We had 2,000 responses to the visual preference survey, so pretty good turnout there. In addition to ranking the images, which we will show you, people were also invited to provide comments, so to sort of supplement the rankings. We typically received a few hundred comments on each grouping of images as well. And so we've provided those in your packet as well, just to kind of support some of the, some of the direction taken from the visuals that were preferred by the community. So the following slides are basically a replica of the slides that we presented during that public meeting and also online for the visual preference survey. We provided images of downtown Elmhurst, just to set the stage and the context for the train station. People were not asked to rank these images, but they were encouraged to provide comments on them. So in your downtown, some of the repetitive comments that came in through the public comments were actually a support for the mix of buildings that you have downtown, and we thought that was important to get feedback on what people liked and didn't like about your existing downtown, knowing that there is a variety of styles present and that this metro station could play off of any number of them and provide, you know, be significant in the identity of downtown Elmhurst moving forward. There was a lot of support for pedestrian-friendly green spaces. Typically, some of the newer condo developments that are a little bit more massive in their massing, there was concerns about the density and lack of pedestrian features on those. Provided some of these images of the historic buildings that you do have downtown, there was good response to the materials of these buildings, for instance, limestone and brick. Some of the newer developments, as I mentioned, there was some concern about the overall scale of them. People typically preferred red brick and limestone, as well as having a little bit more landscape and pedestrian-friendly elements to the building. Some of the civic buildings actually received more positive, some of the most positive responses from the comments. Again, people weren't asked to rank these buildings, but some of the comments, especially around the library and the history museum, were that these were good examples of Elmhurst identity and style. And then, of course, the existing station, comments generally were excited about the prospect of making improvements, and especially in terms of accessibility, some of the clearances around the station, and just the amount of waiting space that is provided, definitely a desire to have additional waiting space. So the conceptual design, which we showed you as the phase one summary, was also presented to the public to give folks a chance to comment. Some comments we received on the site plan included a lot of support for the underpass, as well as the warming shelters, and a desire for additional drop-off and pickup space. We know that north of the main station there is kind of the current pinch point, and so looking to alleviate that is a good comment to keep in mind going forward. Comments on the floor plan, there was some concern that there maybe wasn't quite enough waiting space provided. You'll see in the upper left-hand corner there, we were showing previously a Union Pacific office, as well as the restroom, and that's per metro standards. That requirement has since then been withdrawn, so we were able to just expand the waiting area into that corner, which is why you'll see in all of our floor plans now, the waiting area being the majority of the floor plan, especially on the west side there. There's comments about accessibility, definitely that being a key driver for this project. Folks were on board with having, you know, more accessible station and, you know, wanted to make sure that we kept that at the forefront of our minds during the design process. There was also a lot of support for a vendor space to be included within the station, as well as the 24-hour waiting area, seen as good amenities by the community. So these next few groupings, we did ask the public to rate each image, and that was, the rating represented whether the public thought that was a good image to, for us to use to inform the design of the station. So each image, the community was asked to rank from one to five, one being "I hate it," five being "I love it." So you'll see throughout this series of slides, there's ratings for each of the images on the bottom right-hand side of the slide. So for instance, on this slide, number one, MetroLink example in the upper left-hand corner, received a rating of 3.0, so that's pretty neutral. Anything that was above a three, I highlight it in green just to visually make it obvious as we go through which images were preferred by the community. So bottom right-hand image in this case was favorably viewed by the 2,000 survey respondents. That would be an average, of course, of all of their ratings. I'm sure I didn't miss any comments. In this grouping, the Skytrain example, upper right-hand, was preferred. There was support for some classic styling, but new upgraded openness, and that's a theme that we saw throughout, is that desire for the openness, natural light and views throughout, so ample windows and natural light. Again, the preference for brick and limestone as materials, and then also some support for a more Frank Lloyd Wright-type style. We provided some examples of a station icon historically, this being a clock tower, but we did show a few other examples of how, you know, what might serve that purpose on a train station. So you can see a lot of these clock towers were responded to favorably by the community. As I mentioned, these other examples of how you might provide a vertical element that, you know, maybe is useful for wayfinding, or just like as an icon that can be seen from a bit farther away. None of these received positive ratings. For the exterior covered areas, which we will have a significant amount of in this new design, there was really a strong reaction to natural materials. So you'll see the wood example in the upper right was rated quite highly, as well as the idea of having some seating outside. You get your coffee and sit outside and wait for the train. Again, use of natural materials, one in stone, created that welcoming feel. In terms of the interior character, again, woods, warm colors, lots of natural light were preferred, high ceilings. So you'll see the two examples on the left received better ratings, primarily, I think, incorporating the natural elements, the woods and the natural light was viewed favorably. For the waiting area, preferred comfortable seating, again, lots of natural light and warm colors and accessibility, and general support for having the vendor space within. So you'll see the example that was preferred in this grouping, lots of woods, some warm The vendor space, I think there was just a lot of excitement about having a vendor space, so I think in terms of the architectural style, that will probably follow along from the rest of the station. But definitely, you know, some of these options that had some comfortable seating options were highly rated, and some of the comments spoke to having standing room or high tops, being able to get in and get your coffee quickly and move on with your day, not necessarily competing with the rest of the businesses or food service options downtown. So site amenities, we'll talk about, maybe not as relevant to the architectural style discussion today, but definitely some good feedback here. For the pedestrian underpass, the Lombard Tunnel was viewed as a very good example. We showed a few examples of how art might be incorporated. Those were not preferred, but notably, we did receive a number of public comments saying that that could be a good idea, as well as one public comment during the public ABC meeting following this, in support of public art. In terms of site lighting, general consensus seemed to be to stick with what is working for you currently downtown, so the fixtures that you have downtown were by far the favored fixture, along with comments to make sure that we're doing cutoff fixtures to reduce light pollution and all of that. Landscaping, the majority of support for native plantings, both in planters as well as throughout the site. You'll see that there are some opportunity areas a little bit farther away from the station to have more landscaping, but we are looking for opportunities directly around the station as well, that being a big part of making an area feel friendly and inviting as well. There is support for bike parking, and particularly covered bike parking. So based on that input collected from the community, we pulled all of those slides that were highlighted in green to inform three design alternatives to develop further. Those alternatives were presented at a public ABC meeting, where we took comment from the ABC. They really helped us refine all of the designs, and then we had a second public ABC meeting following that to present the updated designs and to receive their recommendation for what would be the preferred alternative. So their ranking, you can see, we're going to go through the design alternatives in reverse order, so starting with alternative number one, which was not their preferred alternative, and then ending with alternative three, which was their unanimous preferred alternative. Following that, we met with the Public Works and Buildings Committee, who concurred with the recommendation from the ABC. So how alternative number one was developed, you might recognize these images from the visual preference survey. So these images being preferred by the community said we would create a design alternative that incorporated the elements that you see here. So that included the grand archways, red brick and stone, a clock tower on the interior, some rich woods and classical detailing. So alternative one, you can see on this slide, top-left rendering is looking from York Street, York and First, at the entrance to the station there with a prominent clock tower. Interior, bringing in wood elements, which were preferred, you know, received favorable responses from the public. And then on the bottom, just to show you kind of a snapshot of the overall geometry coming both inbound and outbound to the station. Alternative one was not preferred by the ABC. It was seen as less open and inviting, which was a big part of the feedback than some of the other alternatives, and less forward-looking as well. Alternative number two was created from this grouping of images, looking at limestone and white elements, these articulated vertical elements, a little bit brighter and lighter than alternative number one. So out of that grouping, we developed alternative two, which was subsequently split into two alternatives during our discussion with the ABC. They questioned whether the clock tower was a necessary part of this building. So in our second meeting, public meeting with the ABC, we showed both 2A, which includes a clock tower, and 2B, which does not include a clock tower. This alternative incorporates limestone, which was favored by the community, both in the visuals and in the comments, as well as a heavy timber framing structure in order to bring in that warm wood element. ABC found alternative 2B, that would be without the clock tower, to be better than the alternative with the clock tower. So that would be 2B and 2A. Alternative number three was creating, created from this grouping of images, which was preferred by the community. So key elements that we took from this is the simple geometry, horizontal roof lines, the use of wood, glass, and we also incorporated brick as that being a material that was commented on frequently by the community. On the interior, looking to keep it clean, open, lots of natural light, using woods, again, into the interior, and really just a light, bright, open, and welcoming space. So alternative number three, looking from York Street here, you can see that we incorporated red brick on the first floor, the mezzanine portion above that, which includes the mechanical mezzanine area, and then the waiting room in this image is, of course, farther, farther away, so we highlighted that with this vertical element, lots of windows to create that sense of transparency and openness to the community, especially here along First Street. The ABC did prefer alternative number three. That reflected their consideration and discussion of appearance, connectivity to the community, both past and present, the functionality, maintenance, and security of the space as well. There's another view of alternative three from farther west, and the interior, bringing the brick treatment into the interior, there's a durable finish on the interior, simple sealed concrete floor in this case, high ceilings, lots of natural light and simple lighting. We also suggested in this rendering some real-time signage. light and simple lighting. We also suggested in this rendering some real-time signage, real-time arrival signage, which could be incorporated into any of the alternatives as well. To give you the overall snapshots of the geometry coming outbound on the train, as well as inbound, you can start to see in these that we've incorporated the covered bike parking as well. There's actually located on both sides here, some of those site elements become visible. And then the floor plan here, one of the comments that we had received was concern about the number of doors opening up onto the tracks. So we did add additional doors, as well as made them double doors, so that you could really accommodate that rush when the train comes and people just want to get outside and get on the train. And then, of course, no ticket agent office in this one, so all waiting area. And then squared off the end on the east side, there's no clock tower in this alternative, but there is still the 24-hour waiting area with some seating where you can look out and watch your train arrive. Thank you for your attention, and I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Yeah, the only comments I want to make clear is that, again, so Phase One focused on what was needed, what the amenities were with the programming, the size needed and so forth. This is all about architectural style, and all three styles work for the footprint that's allowed, right? So they're all feasible solutions. This is literally just a matter of preference. So the comments and notes on the slide are 100% from the Architectural Building Commission and Public Works and Public and so forth, not, these don't reflect CDM Smiths. We're good with all three here, four, however you look at it. So, thank you.
All right, I think what we'll do is let's take questions regarding the design. Chairman Brennan has advised that he will be removing the report related to this from the consent agenda to, not on the consent agenda. So with that in mind, let's talk about the design or questions that the consultants can ask for us, and thank you both. Alderman Palomski.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the consultants for your work on this and the presentation. I have some questions that might end up, or maybe part of this should be answered by staff, because I think it might fall into the area of Architectural Building Commission and what exactly they were charged with. But just walking through this presentation, it looks like if you look at page 28, 29, 33 and 37, I feel like it gives a good snapshot. Like, I don't know if we can take a look at 33. Look at my notes. Okay, so 28, 29, if we start there. It looks like, okay, so 28 is the only one where all the styles are modern. So we see the one that has the most light. But I've noticed that in the other ones, page 29, 33, where there's a choice, the most traditional option seems to be in green. Is that correct? So for this one, the sight lighting seems to be the public, to the, you know, greater extent compared to the others, favored the more traditional. That's page 37, and then page 29, and page 33. So, oh yeah. So page 33, when given the choice of something more modern, the public chose the most traditional, it appears. And then in, was it 37? I don't know if we looked at that one, but I thought there were three examples. Is that your takeaway when you reviewed this before even got to Architectural Building Commission? Did the public tend to favor the more traditional, as far as your understanding of architectural style? Did the public seem to, when given the choice, favor the more traditional option?
So I think that there was a strong voice for some of these traditional-looking images. I do want to note that it's not necessarily a choice between one or the other. So for instance, this architectural style page, all eight of these were actually within kind of the same page of the survey, and each one was ranked independently. So you could say from this, you know, we had two preferences. There was definitely also preference for, you know, for instance, this image, which has more glass and openness, and that was kind of a theme, as well as the red brick and stone of some of these more traditional images. So all three of the design alternatives were pulled from preferences from the community, as you, of course, have a diverse community with diverse preferences, trying to have an alternative that covered kind of all the preferences that we heard.
All right, other discussion. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and all the work you've put in, and thanks to the public for all their input getting us to this spot. As I've been thinking about this station from the beginning, I think about this as one of the biggest, probably the biggest investment the city will make in our downtown. And while the purpose of it is to serve the commuters, it's an investment in our entire community, and I'd love to see, I keep thinking about, you know, how will different aspects of the project benefit the entire community? So you've mentioned the traffic and the congestion, the underpass certainly is something that's going to be widely available to folks. The landscaping and the aesthetic design, too, I think, is something that everyone can enjoy beyond just commuters. For that reason, I love the glass, because I think that kind of brings people who aren't commuters into that experience of what's happening in the station. I love the glass. If I can just ask a few more questions on the design alternative three. If you can just walk through the different materials that are used in each of the different sections. You mentioned brick, that's obvious. The panels up above and the column, what would the materials of those be?
Yeah, so on alternative three, we are looking at, as you mentioned, the brick at the base. There is notably underneath that a knee wall that changes the elevation from the sidewalk to the platform level. So the entire station is at platform level for, you know, ease and accessibility of accessing the platform. The canopies are metal columns, as well as the metal fascia, which wraps, and then wood underneath. It's a little bit hard to see, it came out dark on this slide, but the underneath of those canopies is all wood. So trying to pull in that element. And then the mezzanine, we're looking at probably a metal panel for that area, that being, you know, farther away from the pedestrian experience and keeping the warmer materials, brick and woods, down at the first floor. The curtain wall would be aluminum curtain wall. And then on the interior, we've again brought the wood ceiling element in, as I mentioned, the brick wraps to the interior. The upper portion of that would just be chipboard. And then we're looking at sealed concrete floor there. Again, as we get into the engineering further and design development of this, there could be tweaks, definitely open to feedback. I think the, you know, picking the design direction overall is kind of the first step, but that is the materials we're portraying.
Yeah, so I'm the civil engineer, I'm the engineer, she's an architect. So we talk in different terms. This is a schematic design phase to her, this is the 10% design phase to me. Either one, they both mean that we're in the early phases and we're trying to just pick a direction. So when we talk about materials, this is, we're trying to make sure that we're spending equal amounts of time on each of these three different alternatives to come up with a good concept, so you can make a high-level decision. But picking materials is, it's going to continue to change, and a lot of the look and feel will be tweaked over time here as we really dig into the details over the next year. So, but again, that's, this is what we're thinking right now.
Ask a follow-up question.
So if there's any preference, I'm just saying there's more time to get comments and suggestions as we tweak.
No, I appreciate that. Another one of my questions really was, you know, given the council's indication of a preference, how much the final station will look like what we see tonight?
Oh, yeah.
So I hear you say there's going to be adjustments. How will those adjustments, possible adjustments, as you add those details? How does that process? Who else will you be getting feedback from? And is it just what we say tonight, or are you going back to either the commission or staff?
So it'll look very much like what you're seeing tonight. What we're talking about is like the bricks. We'll come in with brickboards and go, do you like this red? This one's got maybe a little more brown in it, you know, so we'll be selecting the materials. So there'll be, you know, small tweaks, but the overall look of the station will look like what you see tonight.
You know, and really, the council signs off on the design, so, you know, when different choices come in, they could be made by the ABC, they could be made by the council, by the Public Works Committee. So I don't know, it's been predetermined how the final decisions will be made. We only got 14 different opinions up here, so. Alderman Deuter, are you?
I'll have more, but we can move on.
All right, Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have some questions about environmental aspects of the structure, particularly with a large number of windows and solar gain, radiation through the windows, and having a vaulted ceiling. So I'm wondering about costs for heating and cooling a structure like this, or any other operational costs with using this kind of exterior?
Yeah, that's definitely something that has come up in our discussions, both with the ABC and with Public Works. So definitely controlling solar heat gain will be a goal of design moving forward. Here we have building-oriented east-west, which is good for being able to control solar gain. So for instance, on the first story where we have the overhang that will shade the glass during the summer, and we're looking at with the other large expanse of glass on the southern, now this is maybe one of those tweaks that we're talking about as we move forward, you know, do we need some shades on those mullions as well? That is definitely something that will come in as we start to do energy modeling and the sort. We're also looking at different MEP systems that would provide the conditioned air at the people level versus heating and cooling the entire space. So there's approaches there that we'll get into during, as we move into detailed design as well. But you're definitely correct that controlling the sun through the windows will be a challenge of the project. Definitely specifying a high-efficiency curtain wall system as well.
Thank you.
Alderman Mulliner.
I want to go to a little bit more basic question, and that is, COVID happened last year. Our train station went to zero, for all practical purposes. The study was done in 2018. Do we have any indication of what we believe is going to occur in the future as it relates to the use of the train station? Are you going to see it at the volumes that you think you're going to see it at, or do you think that that's going to decrease? Because people have figured out remote work, and I believe that there's going to be more people working remote. I don't know what percentage. I don't think any of us do at this point. So, you know, it's just one of those basic questions that I come back to is, you know, are we overbuilding? Are we underbuilding? You know, how do we determine what we anticipate coming back from the COVID situation?
Yeah, and I took this question, and yet the answer is, we just don't know, right? But in all seriousness, you know, so nobody predicted what happened with COVID. We do a lot of work for Metra and CTA and other transit agencies, all of them. We do a lot of planning-level studies for them as well, and everyone is assuming that things are going to go back. It's just a matter of how fast they return, right? So with this project being a long-term project, the right thing to do and the way most agencies are dealing with it is designing for the same projections as before, knowing that that's the future. The other important factor here is that we've gotten federal grant monies, and so all those were based on, so the CMAC, which is a climate mitigation air quality grant, was based on these projections as well. So a lot of the funding that we're benefiting from is based on this projection of bike ridership and metro ridership and so forth. So we don't really want to tweak the numbers, because it may impact funding. We really want to design for the future, because that's what the federal government wanted us to do.
Okay, two follow-up questions. One of them relates to that specific answer, and that is, it appears as if you're anticipating a 700-person increase, and this is something I know you're not addressing, but it's something that staff has to think about, and that is, parking, if we're going to talk about 700 people, 700 more vehicles, where are we going to park them? It's just something down the road that we have to start thinking about if we're building something this large. On the architectural side, another question I have is, going back to the COVID concept, what are you anticipating doing as it relates to air quality and handling diseases that come within the particular facility? If we're going to, there's a lot of now new systems that they're using in order to make sure that these diseases are captured prior to coming into the building. Is that going to be incorporated in this, or what?
So my quick answer to that is, that's coming in the next phase. So right now, we're picking architectural styles, and like I said, we've picked space sizes, and now we're heading towards styles. But the MEP design, the mechanical electrical plumbing design specifics really comes in that next detailed design phase, right? Because again, you don't want to design the mechanical system right now until we know whether we're doing a vaulted ceiling, not a vaulted ceiling. Just the spaces, number of spaces, size of spaces all are impacted. So, but if that's something the council's interested in, without a doubt, we can handle that.
Thank you.
Alderman Palomski.
Thank you, Mayor Levin. My question is more, I think, holistic broader, like Alderman Mulliner's, but it touches on probably answers that staff might be answering. But here goes. Looking at the minutes from the two meetings from the ABC Commission, the first set of minutes didn't have a lot of detail. The second set was actually its draft minutes from June 16th. I'm curious about the process or about the charge of the commission. So I understand from the minutes and from the report or the memo that was issued to Public Works that the ABC took into consideration these factors: appearance, connectivity, past and present, functionality, maintenance and security. So I'm curious about where did those come from, and was this within the context of also, was the commission charged with looking at the downtown plan and about the guidelines and quality building materials listed there? How was this presented to the commission, and were they charged with rank these, or was it start from, you know, this point, because this is, we're at this point because we already have our downtown plan? I wonder if we can have an explanation as to where the ABC started and what their goal was.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Assistant Public Works Director Cory Tenbury to give us a little color on what happened at the ABC meetings. Cory's been doing a great job in fostering this through the process, and I will ask her to comment to the extent that you can, Cory.
Sure. So we actually met with the ABC first in August of 2020 and just explained what our process was going to be. Since we were starting Phase Two and the architectural visioning portion of the project, we wanted to let them know you're going to come into play as we move forward in this process. So we explained that we're going to do a public open house, whether it was going to be virtual or in person was going to be determined by the pandemic and where we were at, and also do a survey. And then we were going to give them all of that information for them to review, and then help us select or rank a preferred alternative. We didn't tell them on the first day what they were going to have to do as far as whether they were going to rank it or pick one. far as whether they were going to rank it or pick one. We just said, we're going to walk through the process. We want to give you all the information, let you see what the community input is, and then, you know, help us determine these alternatives. So we did the public open house in February, and we also did the survey at the same time. We left that open for about a month, collected all that data. CDM Smith's team did a great job organizing it, kind of collectively grouping common comments or ideas and themes that ran through the open house and through the survey. And then they took those preferred visual options out of the survey and the open house and grouped them into three different alternatives that would complement each other with the different styles and textures and context, I think you guys like to say. So they did the three alternatives, and we took those basic alternatives to the ABC at the end of May and walked them through the public input process, walked them through the comments, the survey, the rankings, the groupings, and the developed alternatives. And this, the ABC is a group of five professionals. They're all developers and builders in the downtown. So they had a very unique professional perspective. And so they kind of looked at all the different alternatives and asked different questions about the materials. They asked about the mechanicals, the HVC. They asked a lot about maintenance, which I appreciate because I'm going to have to clean it up when it's built, and what all the different pros and cons were to the alternatives. So they did see what the public input was. They saw how CDM Smith grouped those and prepared the alternatives. They gave feedback, and then those alternatives were revised and refined and brought back to the ABC. At that point, we told them, we don't, you know, don't necessarily need you to pick your favorite, but we need you to rank them because we need to give some guidance to the council. Like, you know, do you have a preferred alternative, a second, a third, for the council to be able to review and consider? And so they, they did have a clear frontrunner, which was captured in the minutes and in their discussion. They preferred alternative number three. Like you, you listed those criteria. That's how they look at it from like the professional eye of things that the community would need or what they look at when they're developing something, you know, connectivity to the community. How do you draw in, make it more than just a train station, bring in people from the community. And so they, they looked at those. Those were the reasons that they felt number three was a better alternative for the community. And so they ranked it that way. And then we presented all of that information to the Public Works and Buildings Committee, and ABC provided a little bit more information. One of the members was able to make it, and then the committee reviewed it, and here it is at council. So that's the background.
Follow-up, please. Was the downtown plan and the subway plan, like the, the quality building material section, for example, discussed? I see it wasn't listed as one of their priorities, but was that discussed or?
So we did not specifically discuss the downtown plan or the materials.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Other discussion? Alderman Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a rendering of what people on the train would see as they go through Elmhurst? Did I miss it?
Yeah.
Oh, just not colored, okay.
This was kind of just an additional snapshot so that you could at least see the overall geometry. So I apologize around a little bit harder to read. But here it is coming out down on the train.
That's what the engineer sees.
I know. I skipped over the non-colored ones. Thank you, sorry.
Other discussion? Alderman Doiter.
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions. When you were answering the question about the glass and the maintenance that might be associated with the glass, you mentioned something about maybe the south-facing side might be adjusted, and you mentioned shades. Can you talk a little bit more about that and what it might look like?
Sure. So what I mean by that, so creating a horizontal projection on the south face is a, you know, approach to control that solar heat gain. So you see in a lot of curtain wall systems now will have the kind of projections that are the same material as the curtain wall that kind of have fins. That's kind of a common approach to controlling sun on a curtain wall. Happy to follow up with an example of that. And then, of course, you know, just plain old shading can be, you know, like roller shades can be an option as well. But I was more speaking towards an architectural feature. We think that plays well with this alternative, with the kind of emphasis on the horizontal lines.
Can I just ask a few follow-ups?
Please do.
So the shade that you would expect would be something that's horizontal. It's more of the, the building itself, not necessarily the roller shades, which I'm happy to hear. I'm picturing the roller shades, and that seems, you know, to Cory's point about maintenance, you know, someone who's putting them up, who's putting it down? Do the commuters do it, and do they break? But the idea of the hang makes sense. Just a few questions on the materials. You mentioned the knee wall that's at the sidewalk level. Did you say what the material of that would be?
So here, we're showing it as concrete. So the knee wall, as well as some of these, these site walls. Again, multiple ways we could treat that, form liners and things like that. But we think it plays well with this alternative to, to leave the concrete knee wall exposed.
Another question.
The floor is yours.
With, with this alternative, and when you were dialing in kind of how to incorporate glass, did you think of other materials? Were there, did you go back and forth on anything? Anything as an alternate to the metal panels in particular?
Yeah, we had some discussion over that with the ABC, thinking, you know, metal panels are fairly durable approach, but maybe not the warmest. We had considered other composite panel materials. I think through the discussion with the ABC, or Public Works, actually, it was, thinking that that would be, that the metal panel would be a durable alternative for that portion of the building. We did play with kind of the size of those openings up on the mezzanine level as well. That was one of the items that ABC had us adjust between our two meetings.
Would the, you mentioned composite panels. Would those look like stone? Do those, are they're made of stone? What, what's the composite panel?
Yeah, so they can have a variety of looks to them. You could do a stone look. You could try to make it look like limestone, for instance. You could try to make it look like wood, but it's more of a, like a resin phenolic material. So it would be more durable than either of those, or less maintenance than either of those.
I'm mindful of the input from, that Alderman Palomsky mentioned of, you know, the preferences noted for brick and limestone. And I'm, you know, wondering if limestone could be added to the design? And if so, is that something we'd have to indicate now? Or is that something that you see as a possible adjustment moving forward, regardless of our decision or discussion tonight?
I think particularly that mezzanine material is something that we want to look at some alternatives for. As I mentioned, Public Works did kind of have that question as well. Probably using limestone itself would be more costly and more maintenance, but definitely something that could provide that look. I think, yeah, if, that's something we could tweak moving forward.
Thank you.
Alderman Hill.
Yes, if we could go to slide 19 for a second. I'm just seeing some of the, the comments that, and trying to understand, they're a little bit at odds with some of the things I'm seeing called out in the slides. But on slide 19, we look at the civic buildings, which are our slides. I'm sorry, slide 20, excuse me. Slide 20 and 21. So I know in the last line there on slide 21, I mean, I hate to bag on City Hall, but it says City Hall and Police Station are outdated in terms of their appearance. So going back to the previous slide with the picture of City Hall, I mean, I look at that and I see, you know, aesthetically, something that's very similar in some respects to the station. And when we go forward to slide 20, I'm seeing that specifically the History Museum and the Public Library are called out as most, if I read through those, I could almost read them as saying they're the most Elmhurst-like style here in town. They're sort of our brand, our representation. So they're very different, two more organic, more, you know, there are some angles, but there are some curves. And I just, I wonder, how do you, how do you reconcile those two? It looks like we've got a structure that's very, I know it's not, but aesthetically, it seems to come from the same family of something like City Hall, the City Hall building. But yet we have a brand that seems to call out these more white limestone, slightly organic buildings, not so horizontal. Well, there is a horizontal roofline on the Public Library and the Art Museum, but.
Yeah, so definitely, you know, trying to get, meet everyone's comments and preferences, which is why we developed the three alternatives. Alternative number two was, in fact, inspired by, you know, in addition to that, that grouping, the Public Library as being called out as a good example of Elmhurst architecture. So that was kind of our, our response to these comments, particularly Public Library and History Museum, in terms of City Hall being outdated versus the new station. I think it's, it's always a challenge to try to get that timeless look, and maybe in, in the opinion of some of the public, that maybe hasn't aged as well. I think there are other examples, you know, somebody mentioned support for like a Prairie-style type architecture, which definitely has stood the test of time and would be our hope and intent that the station would, would fall into that category.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, the one thing to keep in mind is that, we always look to the public to provide input and so forth. But, but again, trying to analyze this like an engineer is kind of difficult because the data is conflicting, right? Because again, everybody has a personal perspective that's their own. And so it's, it's hard, you know, if people put an extreme score, and again, just the number of folks responding, it's, we try to, we tried to make sure that we brought forth three alternatives that reflected kind of the range, right? So I don't, I don't think that we can necessarily say the public input is that they absolutely wanted one thing, right? I think it was, there were some things they liked and didn't. We tried to make three concepts that showed the three different ranges of things that were acceptable to the public. And again, I mean, not, not to take anything away from the public, but, but again, dealing with the ABC is a whole different experience, right? I mean, these are architects, developers, builders, and so forth that are understanding the cross and pluses and minuses between what one person said, I think it was Alderman Doiler, is it? Doiter?
Doiter.
About kind of openness and kind of, in my mind, economic development side of things, like openness of a space versus Alderman Hill, is it, that was concerned about the windows and the, the maintenance and the, the energy side of it. And to me, as a transit engineer, I look at the safety and security and the benefits of glass. So there's, there's pros and cons to all the different alternatives and directions you go. And so that group of folks kind of understands a lot of the pluses and minuses and costs and benefits and so forth. So, so anyway.
Thank you. Go to Alderman Cahill and Alderman Brennan, I think you have his hand up next.
During the Public Works meeting, one of the questions on the panels we talked about was another building that's similar to that. And my recollection, it was the library actually uses similar panels that have the, and the glass combined. Could you comment on that a little more?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, on, on our discussion in Public Works, we talked about the panels themselves because that was a concern. It's been a concern in the, in the town. But one thing we were surprised with, the metal panels, didn't realize that the Public Library actually utilizes some of the panels.
Yes.
And how they blend it very well with the glass, you really don't notice it.
Yeah, it really reads as part of the curtain wall, to your point, which I think is, you know, represented by some of these images as well as the way we incorporate it here.
And then one other question is, is there, with the roofline of this building and trying to be more of a green community, there is, is there a possibility to have a green roof, potentially to add some more environmental friendly?
Yeah, definitely. So this alternative, having the flat roof, would be a great candidate for a green roof. And on a lot of our projects, we do like a pretty shallow cedum tray system, which is relatively inexpensive and low to no maintenance as well, and could, could help with the energy efficiency side of things, definitely.
Thank you. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. So as, as we reviewed this in, in committee, it was very interesting. I'm a data guy. So when I look at the data on the, the visual sampling or feedback that you're getting from the committee, or from the residents, you know, very few, I'm not an engineer, so the visual preferences, the pictures that you provided, very few actually broke the threshold of like 3.2. I think there was a 3.8. So to me, statistically, there are a lot of difference of opinions on what this should look like. And, and I get the, the fact that, you know, there's, there's comment to the materials. I'm, I'm totally on board with that. But I think if you look at the raw data, you know, that, that really drove, you know, my perspective on, on what came out of committee because there are very diverse views going on here. The comments stand out really big, but, but I, I don't think they overweight the, the data, data itself. And so I also think that as, and I have a question here. I was not in the Architecture and Building Commission, but, but what I didn't know, the five people that sit, commissioners that sit on this commission are very distinguished at their trade. And without question, you know, I'm sure the discussion that you had with them in those meetings were, were very pointed and very specific. And I appreciated their input because it's what they do for a living. It's a combination of architects and contractors. And, and I believe that, that they, they really know what, what they're doing. And I think their heart's in the right place with respect to driving this type of, you know, project or making sure this type of project is done well and that will last well, well into the future and beyond their lifetime. So the question I have for you, I just want you to confirm that, that the data shows very wide swings in preference. And so is that true?
Yeah, that is true. As you noted, it was kind of hard to even break that 3.0 barrier. So people definitely had, you know, a wide variety of, and sometimes conflicting opinions on the survey.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm in belief that, that we have a really tough job. We're not going to make everybody happy. I mean, there's a lot of opinions. There's a lot of input that has gone into this. And so what I look, look at.
Alderman Brennan, just when we get to the report section, you may want to opine more than, you know, sort of get our questions out to the consultants.
Okay.
And since you were the chair, you'll have plenty of them.
Thank you.
Other questions of our consultants? Last call? All right. Chris, Sarah, thank you both for educating us on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we'll hang out just in case, but thank you.
All right. We'll move on the agenda then. Item, where do we go? 5.1, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there any member of the public that has a written communication that they would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. All right, there being none, we'll move on to public forum. Item 6.1, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter they choose. We will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, to be fair to other speakers and to the business of the council that must be addressed this evening. Kirk Tamer, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We have one, Mayor, Debbie O'Donnell.
So O'Donnell, if you want to step to the microphone against the wall there and state your name, address is optional.
I don't think I do, anyway. My name is Debbie O'Donnell, and I'd like to...
My name is Debbie O'Donnell, and I live at 270 Michigan Street, across the street from a teardown. Our driveways are in line with each other, so that has...
Excuse me, could you pull the microphone down a little bit? We got some traffic behind us. Thank you. Go ahead.
That has contributed to a big part of my problem with this teardown. Let me start by saying, this has been the summer from hell for me, and the street paving hasn't even begun yet. My story begins when I was sitting in my front room and a Nicor gas truck pulled up. Three men jumped out, one with a shovel, and started digging a hole in my lawn. They were disconnecting the gas line. When I called the city and asked, why wasn't I notified of this? They simply said they weren't obligated. Since when does a simple courtesy have to be an obligation? Shortly after that, there were holes dug in the street, right in front of my driveway, making it very difficult for me to get out of my driveway. Who were these people? Nobody communicated this to me either. I asked them, I said, are you from the city? Does the city know you're doing this? Part of communicating is accommodating the Elmhurst residents when they're going to infringe on their property. And that's what they were doing. And then just last week, Friday, they dumped a pile of stones directly in front of my driveway, making it very difficult, making it impossible for me to get out of my driveway. Why is it when, right before you're going to pave the streets, you notify everybody about it with a letter? How respectful. But why are you, the city of Elmhurst, not holding the builders accountable for doing the same? It's called being respectful to the Elmhurst residents. Otherwise, they're getting away with murder. They don't care what they're doing to our property or to our, causing us a great deal of inconvenience. And then there's the violations. They keep the porta potty on the street. Saturday, it was on that street all day long. I'm sorry, it was on the sidewalk. It was blocking the sidewalk. And I hope that's a violation in the city of Elmhurst, to have a porta potty on the sidewalk. And they're throwing garbage around on the property. Several times, they've blocked the street with their equipment. I have a fire hydrant in front of my house. Several times, they've parked in front of it for several hours. I know I should have called the police on that, and I'm going to in the future. So the bottom line is this. I don't have access to the alley behind me. My only way out is my driveway. This teardown has given me, has put undue stress and hardship on me, and it isn't being fair and it's not right. The only way it's going to change is for you, every one of you, the city of Elmhurst, holding these builders responsible for communicating and accommodating. I don't think that's asking too much. I want each one of you to put yourselves in my place. Just take a few minutes and tell me how you would feel if this were happening to you. And it's continuing to happen. I know it's not going to stop just because I'm talking to you this evening. Somebody said to me, oh, it'll be done soon. No, it won't. And I don't care about soon. I care about now. I've lived here, it's going on 40 years, and I love living in the city of Elmhurst. And I hope that can continue. Please, don't change that for me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who has signed up?
No, Mayor, no one else has signed up.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up that would like to address the council during public comment this evening? Mr. Pagach?
Tonight, I came here, my name is Claude Pagach, 566 West Gladys. I originally came to the council to just ask one question that I haven't been able to get an answer out of, the council. I read in the paper, we're going to start the water retention at York High School. I've asked a couple times, what does the project cost? If you've got contractors working, you've got contracts with them. So I'd appreciate either somebody from this council or my own alderman come up with a number. What is the project costing? Since the $4 million that was allocated by general obligation bonds was pulled out of it, when you didn't have an agreement and sent over to put in water mains. So you had no money. And even Public Works couldn't tell you what it would cost. But then tonight, I would just ask the alderman and the architect to consider one thing. It's a railroad station for people to board a train. They're not going to spend all day there. It's not a hotel. It's not a restaurant. It's a railroad station. That's what it is. And I hear we're going to have a clock tower, and we want limestone. And we want entire glass. Can this council and the architect just get to the idea, it's a railroad station? Freight trains drive by it all day long. I understand that it has to be replaced. Replaced with what? There, these pictures have come up with, people would like a clock tower? And what does that do for a railroad station? Limestone? Brick? Selection of materials? Why not go to walnut, maple, rosewood? How long are these people going to be in this station before they hop on a train and head downtown? It's unrealistic. This station, I'll grant you, is not the greatest thing in the world.
Mr. Pagach?
That we have now, but Lord...
Could you wrap your comments up? You're over three minutes or so.
What are they trying to design for you? People are not going to sleep in the place. They're going to board a train. That is the reality of it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak at public forum? All right, we'll close public forum. We'll move on to the consent agenda, agenda item seven. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove from the consent agenda? Alderman Brennan?
7.9.
7.9. Any other items to be removed? All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 7.9?
Point order.
Alderman Cahill?
We need to read the...
Oh, my God. Thank you, Alderman Cahill. Well, everyone can sit back for a while. Be ready. Alderman and Tamer, you have three minutes.
Minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on July 6, 2021. Accounts payable July 15, 2021. Total $4,148,184.42. Reappointment of Beckton, Ryan, and Sadowski to the library board. Referral, Shady Lane and Ferndale Sidewalk to PW&amp;B Committee. Alderman Bob Dunn and Jacob Hill. Report, naming rights for the Elmhurst History Museum Research Library. Sorry, I've been doing the numbers. 7.6, report, requested declare surplus obsolete ballistic vests. 7.7, report, Second Amendment to the IGA with District 205. 7.8, report, Emory Lane sewer recapture agreement. 7.9, report, Elmhurst Metro Station Design Alternative Recommendation. 7.10, an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision for the properties commonly known as 954 North York Street and 956 North York Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.11, an ordinance granting conditional use permits and associated variations for the development of the properties commonly known as 828 North York Street and 836 North York Street. 7.12, an ordinance to amend Section 36.11 entitled Limitation on Number of Licenses of Article 2 entitled Retail Licenses of Chapter 36 entitled Liquor of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.13, an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to Section 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6. 7.4, an ordinance approving an amendment to the official comprehensive plan of the city of Elmhurst to adopt the city of Elmhurst Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. 7.15, a resolution authorizing the sanitary sewer manhole cover, manhole covers purchased for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.16, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for 2021 asphalt rejuvenating program. 7.17, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2021 inlet cleaning program. And 7.18, a resolution authorizing DuPage County gasoline and diesel procurement joint purchase, procure, excuse me, procurement joint purchase.
Thank you for schooling me, Alderman Cahill. And although you read 7.9, that will be removed from the consent agenda. So at this time, then I would ask again for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 7.9. Alderman Cahill, second. Alderman Doiter. Kirk Tamer?
Verimus?
Aye.
Doiter?
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy. The consent agenda passes. Moving on to committee reports. Item 8.1.
Point order.
7.9.
7.9.
Oh, you're doing a great job tonight. All right. 7.9, can I have a motion to put item 7.9, which you already read, but do you want to read it again?
No, it's a...
Go ahead.
Okay. It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the council approve the architectural style of alternative number three to create Phase Two engineering documents for the Elmhurst Metro Station project. Signed, Michael Brennan, Chair, Michael Hanquist, Vice Chair, Brian P. Cahill, Alderman Ward Four, absent, Tina Park, Alderwoman Ward Five.
Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. First off, sorry for my commentary during the presentation, Mayor. This report, I pulled it because I feel it should have fallen under committee reports anyways, so we could have some discussion as well as up-down vote on it. This report moves forward a very exciting project in the city, the train station. I'm going to relive some of the details here because I think it's really important to claim the ground around the journey. So the journey started in 2016, where we collected input from the public on station current usage and needs. And, you know, from there, in 2020, we started Phase Two, where engineering and architectural designs, where we collected more information from the public, leveraging visual preferences on architectural style, exterior areas, interior character, waiting area, vendor space, pedestrian, underpass treatment, site lighting, landscaping, and bike parking. You know, from this input, you know, CDM Smith created three distinct designs that captured the essence of that feedback. These three designs, design alternatives, were then, you know, discussed in public form before the Architecture and Building Commission. The commission is comprised, as I said earlier, of five distinguished commissioners that have extensive experience as either architects or contractors in Elmhurst. After their first meeting, they did provide, you know, feedback to CDM Smith, and CDM Smith incorporated that feedback into the design alternatives and brought it back to the Architecture and Building Commission. And in the second meeting, is also public forum, the commission unanimously voted for design alternative number three. We met on July 12 as a Public Works and Building Committee. We reviewed the materials presented by CDM Smith, discussed all the design alternatives, and after much discussion, also unanimously, you know, concurred with the recommendation from the commission. To be quite honest, going into the committee meeting, I wasn't aligned with, you know, design number three. But after discussing it in committee, hearing from, you know, the one representative from the ABC Commission, I, design three grew on me. And, you know, I see the merits. I do want us as a, as a community to ensure that we do this right. So I am sensitive to all the questions that were before us tonight, but I'm also a big believer that there's no way we're going to make everybody happy with our decision. So in my opinion, you know, after much, you know, debate with myself, you know, I think this design alternative is fresh and modern, yet it marries together the brick material that, you know, we got feedback on through the surveys, metal material, which is used on the art museum and possibly elsewhere in the city. And I love the fact that it offers a lot of natural light. I think it's very inviting. So this report's before the council tonight. It recommends that we move forward with design alternative number three and authorize CDM Smith to create Phase Two engineering documents for this project. So with that, I'll open it up.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Palomsky?
Thank you, Mayor. If I had, I believe if I sat on the committee and I was part of that discussion to review what was sent to the committee, I would come to the same conclusion to say, here's a memo sent to us by Architectural Building Commission, here's what we have before us. And I think I would fall in line with that discrete task. But I'm looking at bigger picture, and I know we can't govern a style or taste, but it's not, I agree with what Alderman Brennan said earlier tonight, and that is, the composition of the Architecture and Building Commission is made up of real professionals. They're architects, builders, landscape architect, and they totally know what they're doing. But it's not their fault that they were not advised to proceed in a way that takes into consideration what the council has adopted based on a process similar to this, but also incorporating the public feedback. So, you know, I know there have been a number of times before the council where we have a project, and sometimes the feeling is that, well, this isn't a city building. We can't opine that much. But I feel that the public has spoken, and the council has spoken, that we at least have those design and quality building material guidelines to use as, this is our fundamental accepted basis for where we will start and then proceed from there. And that still allows all types of styles. It could be like the library, or it could be, you know, something with more natural wood. You know, it would allow for multiple styles. And I'm, you know, I'm looking over the duties of the Architecture and Building And I'm, you know, I'm looking over the duties of the Architectural and Building Commission. Three of their five duties have to do with, or two have to do with appeals, one has to do with the facade program, and there are only two other duties. One is advising the council on matters pertaining to architectural, I'm just giving some words where it doesn't pertain, architectural requirements of public buildings. So I think we, they have advised on those requirements, and the other one is other duties as the council may direct. And I, I'm thinking that if, I want to hear from the Architectural and Building Commission, I just wish if the council had been involved in that, you know, duties as the council may direct, I would ask that they make a recommendation based on what the council has already approved. I'm not saying that this rendering couldn't be tweaked, as we said, to reflect what has been adopted. And I appreciate their input, and I, again, I think if I were just to, if I were asked to, all right, sit on the committee, review the information presented in this memo, and I would probably come up with the same conclusion. I think, bigger picture, I'm not quite sure how, you know, we have this downtown plan, and we also have, though, an Architectural Building Commission that says, in reading the minutes, the previous meeting, the ABC Commission expressed zero interest in alternative one, and that alternative design was just included for reference, where the public did have an interest. So I'm just curious how, when the public conveys an interest and our downtown plan supports a decision, how is it a commission can just eliminate that, saying there's zero I, I hope that if this, when it proceeds, that we will see some tweaks in the building materials. I think some of what we've learned with our other projects that are not city properties are that the building materials, I think there's a more of an interest now to not support something like a composite or a cement board. So hopefully that will, that will change as we proceed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Brennan.
Just to share some perspective, even though the commission, I saw that comment as well, we discussed and reviewed each alternative on their merits.
Thank you.
So at the committee, we did not look at 2A, 2B, and 3 only. We looked at all four. And secondly, you know, I think the material that's being considered is metal, which is material that's used on the art museum. So it's not a composite, you know, material. So I'm, I'm not quite sure where metal falls within our guidance that we provide, but just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you to the Architectural and Building Commission and the Public Works Committee for their work on this. And I guess I want to explain why I am likely to vote no on tonight's report, and some of that is related to, I do feel that this station is a brand, as I said before, for Elmhurst. And I took away a number of different impressions from the comments that I read in, in the presentation. Some of the comments from the public were aversions to boxy structures, not too modern or sleek, to use natural materials, and to have a smaller and warmer structure. And as I mentioned elsewhere earlier, slide 19 sort of spoke, or excuse me, slide 20 spoke to that Elmhurst brand. And I think, when I think of a train station where many people pass through, many people see centrally located on a prominent street, I do think it's very important to reinforce the style that the public comes to regard as Elmhurst-like. And it's my impression that alternative three doesn't represent that necessarily. And I know this isn't a, this is a subjective impression and very much an aesthetic judgment, but in some respects, it seems to me that alternative 2B does, that's the version without the clock tower. When I look at the comparison with alternative 2B and other structures and some of the other things mentioned that the public was looking for, it does seem like it's a better expression of some of those concerns and wishes and desires. I will piggyback on Alderman Palomsky's comments that had I been in these meetings, I might have reached a different conclusion with the data, but I'm, I'm making these comments based on my experiences and the reports and my impression. And as a side note, I would also say that having gone through a similar renovation at the Elmhurst University Library, a strange outcome of opening up walls to include more glass and more sightlines is that we ran out of wall space. And, you know, if you look at it from a public art perspective, we, and as an art museum, the university library, we, we didn't realize the importance of that wall space and how important it was to not have glass on some walls. So I think there are many unintentional side effects of a glass structure, and that's just an example of one, along with solar gain, solar radiation, increased operational heating and cooling costs led me to this opinion on this report. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, mindful of one of the comments that was made earlier regarding City Hall, which serves a fantastically, serves a very necessary function and does it very well. But I don't think, as the public indicated, that it's held up as a desirable style of architecture. I think the comment was that it's outdated. And as I was thinking about the metal panels, and do we have metal panels, panels in other places? The art museum has them. City Hall, I think, has them across the front. And, you know, there are similarities between the train station design, the third one, and City Hall. They do seem to reflect similar styles, and I think it would be disappointing to the community if we ended up with a train station that adopts the look of City Hall. Not that there's anything wrong with City Hall, but I think my hopes for the train station are that it, again, for its location and this benefit to the community, that it's something more than just a basic function. It is the heart of our downtown. Lots of people see it, lots of people go by it, lots of people use it. And I'd really love for us to be some, love for the train station to be something that we all are pleased to see. So I do like the glass, the difference of opinion that makes it so hard to, to get where everyone's headed, but I, and I'm torn honestly right now, do I support version three with the hopes that it might look a little bit different, a little less City Hall-like, or do I vote against it? And, you know, I think all three scenarios, I don't know if two hits the mark either. I, again, I don't know that any of these versions are exactly where they should end up. So for that reason, this is, this is a tough decision for me.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Alderman Cahill.
Yeah, so during our committee meeting, we had a lot, a lot of questions. This is actually probably the longest committee meeting I'd been in on my tenure so far here. Some of the things that weren't mentioned, that things that came up was, one thing with the visibility see-through, there's additional safety for passengers, the police officers are able to see through. It's just a level of security for the community. Some of the other things that I looked at, especially being, myself being an engineer, is the long-term maintenance, and that's something that we looked at. And the lack of limestone actually is, decreases the long-term maintenance. So that was one thing that was, for me, was very important because it's something that you spend now, but it's also how much does it take to keep it, you know, upkeep? The style, although it wasn't necessarily my first one that I looked at, or even when I filled out the survey, and I hope everybody had a chance to fill out the survey for inputs, but the Frank Lloyd Wright Modern, you know, Franklin Wright's been, has, has withstood the test of time as far as architecture design, in my opinion. And this really sort of has the same sort of look and feel to it, although more modern. And also the panels was something we did discuss. I think from, by recollect, even the library actually has the same metal panels, although you may not realize it because they're up high in certain, certain areas, it does have the sort of similar aspects. And I agree that library is one of our best buildings in town. So if we're able to do something with metal panels and materials that are more, that are favorable, like limestone or brick, you know, I think we should give it a chance on, to see what the, some of the options they can come up with. And, you know, one of the other things, the last thing they mentioned, and last thing I'll say, is the, the solar radiation I was also concerned about, there were things with the overhangs, that they could extend those to reduce the shade, also some venting that the, actually the library uses to help kill, to keep that cool. And you think about it, the library actually faces west in the, in the big glass, and that is able to operate. And I've been in the library many times, and I've never felt that I've been warm or overheated. And I have been in places around the world that have not the same feeling with the same amount of glass. So there are things that they can be added to the design that will help address all those issues. So that's, when we came to vote, that was, all these things considered was the reason I voted yes to move forward with it.
Alderman Deuter.
Can I just ask a question? I guess it would be of the committee. I heard Alderman Brennan say it wasn't expected to come out as quickly as it did, but you reached consensus and you, you know, there was an option that surfaced. And recognizing the community has had plenty of opportunities to provide input, right, at the different steps of the process, but in terms of this decision, I don't know that the public has tuned in to this. This is really kind of a, a critical moment for the future look of the station, and I'm wondering if there would be any consideration to waiting for two weeks, having this come back, to give the public an opportunity to weigh in, again, to us specifically, to the Aldermen, so that we can have that input for the decision. I don't know if it's time-sensitive or, you know, where we are at the process, but I guess I would ask if there might be consideration for a two-week postponement.
Alderman Hanquist.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just add a couple of comments. I think as we've gone through these processes in the past, there is a very thorough process laid out for this train station. There's been an enormous amount of community involvement. We have a commission involved that has been mentioned by even folks that have some trouble with what this design looks like, that there's an excellent group of individuals that spent a lot of time working on this. And they, they spent a lot of time talking to the community. So to your point, Alderman, the, when we met last week and sat down, I didn't think about this design as my first choice either, as Chairman pointed out. But as we went through this, as my colleague pointed out, we asked a lot of very detailed questions about the engineering, the function, the long-term perspective, the input from the community on the, on the different components of it. And what stuck out, what stood out to me in talking, and we had one of the members there from the commission, he said, this was a 5-0 vote. We went through all these different designs, we looked at all these different possibilities, and as a group, we were unanimous that this was the right choice. And it, to some of your comments, although I would say everyone has the opportunity to talk to any of us at any time during the week, and I didn't get any calls, I'm sure you did, but we had a lot of input and a lot of time to look at this and discuss this. And if we say we're going to delay, that's okay. I don't know that in the next two weeks, especially at the end of July, when everyone's on vacation, we had a lot of extra input. But I would just fall back on the work that was done in the committee, the work that's been done by the commission, the work that's been done by the architect, has been very thorough. There's not a, I don't quite get what we're doing here. It's, it's been, it's been very well thought out. And so if we want to delay two weeks, I don't know that it's going to change the recommendation. Maybe we should have done more to have that, the commission here to discuss it, and did more of a committee of a whole. It is a very large project, as everyone's pointed out. But as far as the work of the committee, I think we did a very good job, and it became very obvious as we went through the two-hour discussion, that this stood out for design reasons, architectural reasons, longevity. And I think my last comment, we get really into some of the materials and how these buildings are going to work, and I understand it, and, you know, there's been a mistake made on, on semiticus stone, or whatever the hell we call it, and I would agree. And we've taken a little bit more time with these projects. But it's almost impossible to get to a consensus of what material are we going to use and what's that design going to be among 14 of us, much less 45,000 of us. So we do, we set up these processes to be thorough, as this one was, and we come forward with a report that says, based on every, all the input, this is the best option. And if we want to tweak it, as the architect said, there'll be time to tweak it. But this is the design that was recommended, and as I've said, and as others said, this was, was, became a far and away choice that was kind of a no-brainer. So that's why the report's before us tonight. I just don't want tonight to end and for people not to somehow question that there was some fog around this. There wasn't. It was very thorough in the process, and we were very thorough in our discussion of it. So those are my comments. By the way, if we're not going to do this, Mayor, I'm a little confused, if we're going to vote this down, I don't know where we're going. Are we going to go back to the commission and start the process over again? I mean, we have to think about that.
I have some plans that.
You do. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hanquist. Other discussion? Alderman Mulliner.
Yeah, I would not support bringing this back to committee. I think they've done a fine job in reviewing this. We have a committee process for a reason. A lot of people have been involved in this. You look at the numbers of people who responded to the surveys that are out there, I mean, that's a lot of people who have responded, besides the fact that we heard clearly that there'll still be some choices to be made down the road. There may be some minor tweaks here and there as far as what materials are being used and different things inside. So I think we ought to just move forward with this and move it to the next level, to the next step. Thank you.
Alderman Park.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not really sure if anybody can answer this, maybe you. What was the design process for the library? Does anybody know? Like, is ours for this similar?
Well, before I answer, by turning it over to our resident historian, I do know that a lot of people had problems with the design of the library because it wasn't the Wilder Mansion anymore, but it's become now the loved design. I'm hearing people go on and on about it, what a great design. But Alderman Mulliner, were you reading books at the library at that time?
Yeah, I was. I was not directly on the, on the library board at the time, but prior to the building of it and the selection of the location, I was on at that time. And the process was similar to what we're going through here, with the exception of the fact that the architectural commission was not used. We hired an architect who had a history in Elmhurst and understood some of the details about what Elmhurst was about, and that's the reason why it was designed the way that it was. The whole idea was to give it that Elmhurst feel, and I think that that's what we're getting here with this project. I think we're getting somebody who understands that we want that Elmhurst feel. It was, the library is a different beast. A lot of input was put forth from the community, but the difference is that it's the library board that actually did most of the work on that as far as how the building was going to look. We just kind of had final, yeah, okay, move it ahead. And it was more about the budget on our end than it was anything.
Thank you. Alderman Palomsky.
Just a final comment. I wouldn't expect the council, or the committee, or any commission to be able to take public feedback and be able to integrate it in a way that meets everybody's preferences. I don't think that's possible. I would argue we've not seen a process like this that has a commission when this commission was not given the foundation of the operating principles that are our downtown plan. So for that reason, I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? As I say, last call. All right. Then we will proceed to vote on the report. Clerk Tamer.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn, absent.
Nay.
Nay.
No.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mullenner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Nine ayes, two nays, two absent, one vacancy.
One more time, please.
Nine ayes, two nays, two absent, and one vacancy.
All right, nine ayes, two nays, two absent, one vacant, and the report passes. I will comment afterwards that this is obviously one of the most important projects that's come before us, that a lot of work has gone into it, and I very much appreciate the discussion that we had tonight from all of the Aldermen, the committee work, and the Aldermen's careful consideration of this. So now that I've screwed up several times, I'm a little hesitant to say. Committee reports, 8.1. Clerk Tamer.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the City Council accept the proposal by City Manager Grabowski to enter into an agreement for the positions of Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director with Lotterback and Amen LLP, and to direct staff and the city attorney to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed, Bob Dunn, Chair, Noel Toledo, Vice Chair, Jennifer Veremis, Alderwoman Ward 1, and Chris Jensen, Alderman Ward 3.
I may have a motion to put this before the council. Alderman Jensen, a second. Alderman Veremis, who is taking the lead on this? Alderman Jensen. So very unusual, you have no chair, no vice chair, but we've got our reserves ready to go. Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, Director Trozine is retiring on August 2nd after 32 dedicated years of service to Elmhurst, leaving us an important position to fill. City Manager Grabowski and city staff are very conscious of keeping costs in check and continually looking for innovative ways to provide high service levels at lower cost. In that context, the recent vacancy in the Assistant Finance Director position was successfully filled with a contract employee provided by CPA firm Lotterback and Amen. With Director Trozine's retirement, City Manager Grabowski asked us to consider expanding our contract with LNA to fill this position as well. Over four meetings, we asked numerous questions of city staff about the process and economics of hiring a finance director directly with our traditional staffing model. We asked even more of LNA, given the importance of the position and the innovative model that we were considering. While we examined the decision from many angles, I just want to hit a few key points that led us to support using LNA to fill the Finance Director position. First, the combined cost savings of contracting both the Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director is roughly $70,000 a year versus in-house hires. The contract will be structured such that Elmhurst has an out clause if we decide down the road that the staffing model does not provide as high-level service and commitment to Elmhurst as we expect. LNA provided information on the tenure of the roles they currently fill. That of a contracted finance director is comparable to the expected tenure of an in-house hire. LNA has roughly 100 senior financial, professional staff with many areas of expertise. A contracted finance director would be able to draw on this network as the need arises, a fact which I personally found very compelling. The committee feels that the performance and commitment levels of the contracted finance professional would be extremely high and meet our strict standards at lower cost. We recommend the LNA proposal and ask for your support for this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jensen. Alderman Veremis.
Thank you. I would also like to add a few points. Lotterback and Amen has perfected long-term contract staffing and provides outsourced financial services to roughly 100 finance departments in the Chicago area. The committee asked LNA for a current analysis of contracted financial services staffing, and the average tenure for a finance director and assistant finance director is six years. LNA will be responsible for the recruitment, and city manager will interview the top candidates and make the final hiring decision. The traditional search and staffing model was also examined. HR Director Ms. Wagner provided the committee with a tentative recruitment plan, estimated cost of $1,100 to advertise and four months to complete if staff conducted the search, and if a recruitment company coordinated the search, the cost would be over $19,000. Additionally, this was an outcome of a referral that was submitted in late 2020 to examine vacant staffing positions and the best ways to fill them. Thank you, and we ask for your support.
Thank you. Questions? Alderman Mullenner.
In most cases, as we know, I support most things. This is a particular case where I do not support this at all. I don't support the concept of outsourcing one of our major directors in the city of Elmhurst. I understand that it's going to be a cost savings for us, but I believe that the role of the finance director is so important that it needs to be somebody who's in-house and responsible directly to the city manager. I understand that by outsourcing it, they will still be directly responsible to the city manager, but there's a difference in ownership level when you're a member of the team versus somebody who's been paid as an outsourced consultant to come in and assist us. I understand that they hope to have somebody as a, if you will, a permanent person in that location, but I still don't support it. I believe they need to be a permanent member of our team.
Other discussion? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I initially had some of the same concerns that Alderman Mullenner just expressed about the importance of having someone who's part of that team that we rely on. That said, we do have, we have, when our last finance director left, we had someone who was very experienced, who was able to move into that spot and brought the institutional knowledge. I feel like that's what we're going to be missing, and we're going to be missing that whether we're with a contract employee or, you know, with a new hire that was part of that team. So I think, given the advantages that the committee talked about, it seems like it's worth giving this a try. For some reason, it doesn't work out well. We're not that much worse off in a year or two, assuming we've gotten adequate support and work from that person. So I think for, you know, to see how this goes, knowing that in the future we could change our minds and go with someone who's part of a team, I appreciate that option.
Just to make sure we're clear, I know that LNA works with other one, other, a lot of municipalities, but in particular, I think it was Glenview where they have done what we're doing, which is they have the finance director, Assistant Finance Director, and virtually the entire finance department, other than the counter clerks, but that's, there may be several where they provide finance directors, may not be 100, but... Alderman Veremis.
In Glenview, the population is similar to Elmhurst, roughly the same, and same number of employees, give or take, maybe 20. And they have been providing the service for over 10 years there. I had similar concerns as Alderman Mullenner going into this, I think a lot of us did. And when they provided us with the tenure financial, or the services, the tenure, is what I'm trying to say, that eased our mind, we asked a lot of questions around that. And it's a one-year contract, I believe. So again, to Alderman Deuter's point, we could always go back to in-house staffing. They also are a very innovative company, and beyond just saving annually, they also can provide a lot of resources going forward and as our needs change.
Very good. Any other discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Veremis.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Hill.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mullenner.
No.
Brennan.
Aye.
Ten ayes, one nay, two absent, and one vacancy.
Ten ayes, one nay, two absent, one vacant. Report 8.1 passes. Moving on to 8.2, would you read the report, please?
Therefore, the Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve a resolution to authorize the execution of a letter of intent by and between Ryan Companies US Inc. and the city of Elmhurst for the purchase of property located at 108 North Haven Road, Elmhurst, Illinois. In addition, the committee recommends that the City Council suspend the rules to allow the report and resolution to be approved at the same meeting. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed, Danny Palmski, Chair, Mark A. Mullenner, Vice Chair, and Emily Bastido, Alderwoman Ward 6.
Thank you. You may have a motion to put this before the council. Alderman Palmski, second. Alderman Mullenner. Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report that goes along with the resolution further down the agenda. Speaking to the letter of intent from Ryan Companies, city code defines the requirements that are necessary to apply for a variance, conditional use, map amendment, and plan development, and if you look at those, they're all slightly different. Council approval of this resolution, of the resolution related to this letter of intent is required for Ryan Companies to even proceed through the zoning application process. We discussed in committee how this is indeed required, how we are not obligated to sell the property, and this doesn't obligate us to have any, not obligated at any certain price, or we still can negotiate. So this is something that really is to allow Ryan to proceed through the process.
Thank you, Alderman Palmski. Other discussion? There being none. Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Veremis.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Hill.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mullenner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy.
All right, 11 ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy. Report 8.2 passes. Moving on to resolutions, item 9.1, clerk Tamer.
A resolution authorizing and executing a letter of intent with Ryan Companies. See item 8.2.
Should be very familiar. May have a motion to, on 9.1, Alderman Palmski with the motion, second. Alderman Mullenner. Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the resolution that goes along with the report. The committee discussed, and we made some additions, such as, whereas the objective of the plan development is to encourage a higher level of design amenity and public benefit than is possible to achieve under otherwise applicable zoning regulations. So we discussed this, and it's just to, you know, go in tandem with the report.
All right. Any other discussion on this resolution? There being none. Clerk Tamer.
Veremis.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Hill.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mullenner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy. Resolution 9.1 passes. On to resolution 9.2. Clerk Tamer.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of Second Amendment to comprehensive intergovernmental agreement between the city of Elmhurst and Elmhurst School District 205. See item 7.7.
All right. You have a motion to put this before the council. Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So resolution 9.2 is associated with consent agenda 7.7, and it's a report that amends the IGA with District 205. There are three key areas: extending the date to modify surface area at Brian's School with the gravel lot, new easements required to complete the College View Storm Water Project, and a conveyance of 960 square feet of parking lot property back to District 205. So because of the tight timeframes of the College View Storm Project, we do need to get the easements in place in this IGA process, so we are asking to suspend the rules.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Mullenner.
I just want to say that I'm glad to see this moving forward as quickly as it is. All three areas are beneficial. From the Seventh Ward project's perspective, the Brian Lot is extremely important to give us the year to work with the school district to identify, hopefully, a much more appropriate spot for their maintenance facility.
Thank you. Other discussion? Alderman Hanquist.
Although I am in support of this, I would just ask the city manager if you could put a call in to have him actually cut the weeds in said parking lot. It's getting pretty unsightly. Thank you.
Is that an amendment, or just a friendly... All right. All right, there being no other discussion. Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Veremis.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn's absent. Hill.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Okay, sorry. Toledo, absent. Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mullenner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, and one vacancy.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacant. Resolution 9.2 passes. On to resolution 9.3. Clerk Tamer.
A resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement Emerson Elementary School between the city of Elmhurst and Elmhurst School District 205 regarding stormwater management projects.
Thank you. A motion to put this before the council. Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So back in early June, we approved a report that authorized us to work with District 205 on the IGA in the area of, they did some stormwater work at Emerson that actually encroached on city property, as well as a play area that's been there for some time, and we just didn't know that it was on city property. So we're granting them a terminable easement, that if, you know, we need to pull it back for other purposes, we can do that. But this is a resolution to move forward with this IGA.
Very good. Any other discussion? There being none. Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Veremis.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Hill.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mullenner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy. Resolution 9.3 passes. On to reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. 10.1, Mayor's Report. The only thing I wanted to report on is that I'm sure that many other Aldermen, as well as I as mayor, are getting inquiries from members of the public about where's their mail. I did talk to Alderman Quigley's office, because as most of you know, we don't really deliver the mail here, but people are saying, "Can you use some of your influence to address the situation?" So Alderman Mullenner, you'll be assigned to the post office. So I did contact Alderman Quigley, and when I contacted...
Representative.
Representative, thank you. Moving him down again. He was already on it. We are not the only community that, or neighborhood, including neighborhoods in the city of Chicago, that is experiencing this problem. And I think this might have been sent to the aldermen. It does talk about some of the areas in Chicago that have specific problems, and there's some data. I did ask if the congressman's office could provide us with some data, which I haven't received yet. He's been very responsive on it, and I'm not going to read the whole letter, but for the benefit of the public who is concerned about this, the letter from the governmental relations representative of the United States Postal Service to Representative Quigley states that the postal service has contended with huge increases in package volume, coupled with equally dramatic declines in letter mail. The nation's logistics supply chain has been upended by surging demand, combined with disruptions, some extremely serious, to the surface and air transport industries. And the postal service, like everyone in the nation, has had to confront the effects of COVID-19 pandemic itself, including increased employee absences and widely varied employee availability rates. They absolutely need to protect their employees with new personal protective equipment and procedures and a severe disruption to the labor market. It goes on to say that the postal service contacted Illinois one district officials who advised that area offices continue to experience staffing shortages relating to the pandemic. Since May 1, the average daily employee availability for the Chicago area is 67.72%. So that is about a third of the employees are missing. It goes on to say that because of the rescue plan and the federal, Emergency Federal Employee Leave Act, there have been ongoing shortages. So the city of Chicago has used 118,141 hours of leave and 14,767 lost workdays. So in a sense, what they're saying is under their collective bargaining agreements and under these acts, people are taking time off, and they don't have anyone in there to, that are able to fill the gap. Congressman Quigley, his office has assured me he is continuing to monitor this, but I did want to report that, as many of the Elmhurst residents has requested, we are making our concerns as a city known that mail is not being delivered. I think probably all of us have experienced, you know, some delays in mail. You might be getting your mail three days a week or four instead of five or six, and there's nothing further we can do except to let our concern be known. Alderman Mulliner.
You knew I was going to follow up on this.
Yes.
I know that we have very little control over what the post office does, but I would like to make the suggestion that, as we talk to Representative Quigley again, that we suggest to him that maybe at a minimum, they decide to do three day a week per block or per route so that maybe at least people can be, feel comfortable that they're going to know when the mail is going to arrive, rather than maybe it'll show up today, maybe it'll show up tomorrow. I mean, it's not, it's not a solution for long term, but it might be a short term, so at least people know that they're going to get it on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, rather than, I don't know if I'm ever going to get my mail. Just, and I know he has very little say too, but at least it could be a suggestion that maybe helped to alleviate the problem.
We can pass that along.
Thank you.
Other, any other questions on that? If not, that's my report, and I'll say, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We will make sure everybody gets a copy of that letter. I apologize, I did not send it out to the entire council, but we'll make sure that...
No wonder they look so interested. Thought it was sent to you. All right.
Get that. My mistake. A few things. The History Museums exhibit, To the Moon, Snoopy Source with NASA, still rolling along, right, Dave? And open all the time, and I believe the foundation is doing some special nights for members, so please sign up for that, take a look at the exhibit. Great turnout for it. Citizens Police Academy registration has opened. That starts September 1st. Strongly encourage everyone to participate in that and encourage the residents to do that. And this week's neighborhood roll calls, Tuesday will be at Adams and Euclid at 7:00 PM. Thursday will be at Second and Highland, 7:00 PM. Last item, I want to thank the council for the support on the report for staffing the finance department because it's a bittersweet night for us, because tonight is Tom Trozine's last city council meeting, which is hard to believe, but it is true. And so August 2nd, I believe you'll all get some information on where maybe you can say goodbye to Tom. And we will have something here at city hall, of course, and I'll let the council know what that is, but I think Tom's planning something as well. So, thank you, Tom, for your 32 years here.
Tom, I feel like we should extend the meeting so that the last one is more memorable, but we'll see how it goes. Are there any reports from other elected officials? All right, we'll move on to other business.